Good, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Valerie Austin. I'm the town moderator. And we have a room of 174. Thank you very much. This is the first meeting that we've had in this beautiful new building. And I think the community that put it together and worked hard for the school. I think they deserve applause, don't you? Before we go on, I would like to begin with, if you will join me, with the pledge of allegiance, please. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to introduce people at the front table here. Dawn Gray, our town clerk. Bill Hewitt, our finance... And we have a new finance director, Denise Stembowski. And Jackie Sullivan. We have, I'm going to let the selectmen introduce themselves, starting with the chairman. As this is Dawn Gray's last town meeting as selectman, I think Betty Goski would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming out. Dawn Gray has served on the Board of Selectmen for seven years, and he's done an outstanding job. He has a lot to be proud of, and this building, he's worked so hard with the building committee to make it real for the kids and the community. So I want to thank Dawn for his hard work. Sometimes it's a thankless job, and I want to say I was pleased to serve with him. Thank you.
To my right and my left is the finance committee. I'd like to introduce Bill Cook, the chairman. John Gray, the vice chairman. Michelle O'Keeffe. Kathleen Gilley. Charlie Nacello. And Leanne Berry, the secretary. And I think Bill Cook, Bill Cook would like to say a few words about a departed member of the finance committee.
Who worked on our committee for over 40 years, and he was very dedicated to the town, and he always had a standing answer, and that was no doubt. He was an excellent part of our committee, and I'd like to have a moment to sign off for the ladies.
We also have a few dignitaries on the stage, including Mr. Bill DeRosa, superintendent of Witty Road Tech. And we will start the special town meeting. Ann, would you like to start, Lady?
In the name of the Commonwealth, I hereby require to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in a special town meeting to meet at the Dr. Ellmore S. Bagnell School at 253 School Street on Monday, April 28, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. to vote for the following articles. And that was to Robin Carmelo, his chief of police. Article 1. This article, to pass it, requires a two-thirds vote. To see if the town will vote to rescind Part 2 of Article 21, voted at the annual town meeting of April 25 to 11, as the funds are not required to complete the project known as green repairs to the Ellmore Bank Elementary School, or taken any other action relative thereto. Board of selectmen.
We need to change the wording on this. On the first line, it says to see if the town will vote, and it should say to rescind the vote taken under Part 2 of Article 21. So we just need to add that little section in there. If we could do that, thank you.
Okay. Board of selectmen recommend? Finance? With the amendment. So we're going to vote first on the article as amended. Those in favor of the article as amended, say aye. And opposed, say no. I take that as a two-thirds vote. Now we'll vote on the article as amended, with the vote taken under Part 2. Okay? Excuse me. Those in favor of Article 1 as amended, say aye. And opposed, say no. To the vote. Oh, it's a unanimous vote, sorry. Article 2. To see if the town will vote, remember, Article 2 was in the annual town meeting. Does that have to be changed again? You want?
Okay, again, this one had some wording that needed to be adjusted, so I'll just read the way we want to amend it. To see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article 2, voted an annual town meeting on April 29, 2013, by reducing the available funds transferred $213,867 due to a change in the state appropriation, or take any action relative thereto.
Selectmen recommend? Finance? Favorable as amended. Someone moving? Someone, second? Okay, we're voting first on the amendment, the slight change in wording. Those in favor, say aye. And opposed, say no. Unanimous. Now we're voting on the whole article as amended. Those in favor, say aye. And opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 3. I'm going to paraphrase a little. Vote to transfer $10,000 from the Conservation Commission fees account to the Conservation Commission expense account. Board of selectmen recommend? Finance? Finance board? Recommend? Moved. Do we have a second acceptable? Second, thank you. Any discussion? We're falling apart, getting... Any discussion? No? Okay. Vote on Article 3. Those in favor of Article 3, say aye. And opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 4. Town will vote to authorize an additional sum of $15,000 expended from the Bagnell Summer Program revolving fund over the amount authorized by annual town meeting, Article 23, in 2013, to cover additional expenses, et cetera. Recommend, Board of selectmen? Finance? Moved and seconded favorable, any discussion? Then there being none, more votes. Those in favor of Article 4, say aye. And opposed, say no. Majority. We have one no, I think, then. Article 5. Vote to authorize, selectmen, to file on behalf of the town, and any other, any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Land and Water Conservation Act, and any others in any way connected with the purchase of certain parcel of land located off Main Street, et cetera, in community rest itself. This article authorizes, selectmen, to accept $200,000 grant for the purchase of the matchingly property, towards the purchase of the matchingly property approved at last year's town meeting. The specific language in the article must match the state's requirement, so that's why we're voting on this. Selectmen recommend? Finance? Moved and seconded favorable. Any discussion, questions? There being none, more votes. Those in favor of Article 5, say aye. And opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the land described below from the board currently maintaining such care, custody, and control to such board and the Board of Selectmen for its current purpose. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Further, we authorize Board of Selectmen to grant such easement, covenants, and/or restrictions on said property or portions thereof, as may be required by the DEP and/or the Environmental Protection Agency. Article requires a two-thirds vote, submissed by the Board of Selectmen. Selectmen recommend? Finance? Moved and seconded favorable. Any discussion? Please come to the mic. We've got one at the front, so just wait. Whoa, 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 whoa. Please go to the mic, give your name and address, and...
Turn the mic on.
Hey, it's not my job to turn it on.
This land is over there where the new mill pond is, where the water department has their brick building. It abuts to the land where the water filtration from the Valley Screw Building that travels down through, by where the mill pond was, out the waterway that goes down the back of Washington Street. DEP has taken over the ownership of that filtration building, and just so that everybody knows, as of May 1, due to the water testing that they're taking and the sampling they're getting, they're going to shut down the filtration system because they've got the water clean. They're going to monitor it and keep monitoring it. And they're going to make sure that the bubbles don't come up, and if they do, they'll refire it up. So this is something they needed as a restriction on the properties, so that nobody would do anything that they don't deem necessary.
Thank you, Don.
Any other questions? Now, we need a two-thirds vote to pass this. Those in favor of Article 6, say aye. And opposed, say no. Unanimous. Thank you. Article 7. Is there a second? We've had a move to suspend the reading of the article. Or in favor of suspending reading of the article? Any opposed? We have one. I think the majority have it, then. I will then leave you to read the article. Pennsylott Regional School Committee recommends favorable or unfavorable? It's great here? Yeah.
Come on, the school committee, but they voted favorable.
Favorable. So the rec, selectmen recommend favorable, finance? It's been moved favorable. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? There being none, more vote. Those in favor of Article 7, say aye. Sorry. Name and address, please. Make sure that's on.
In Kenya, and I always have this problem, wondering why we continue to repair flat roofs. It's New England, particularly after the kind of winter that we had. Is there anyone that can con... How many times have we repaired the flat roofs in our schools and in some of the buildings in town? Is that an issue at all? Is there anyone that can, um...
I will. Thanks. Okay. Greg Bright, Pennsylott Terrace, welcome to visit, manager of Pennsylott Regional School District. As the roof we're repairing here, just the flat ones, in 2003, they did the flat roof section in middle school, but for some reason, I don't know why, they didn't do the pitch roof over the auditorium. So this article takes care of that pitch roof section, as well as putting brand-new 97% efficiency boilers in the middle school under the same program we use in all the elementary schools, including Grohl under the junior care program. The state's going to reimburse us 51.79% of that cost. It is not done through debt exclusion, it's factored into the normal prop two-and-a-half budget within the school district. So it's basically, if you're approval, we get all these upgrades and things half-paid for by the state. Thank you.
All right, see? Those in favor of Article... Let me see if everybody's hearing me. Those in favor of Article 7, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 8. See if those capable to put $200,000 borrowing authorized by the Pennsylott Regional School District School Committee for purposes of paying costs of athletic field improvements, land acquisition, construction, and development of athletic plans, including all costs incidental or relative thereto, which amount should be in addition to the $700,000 previously appropriated for such purpose or take action relative thereto, submitted by Pennsylott Regional School Committee. Board of selectmen recommend? Finance? Favorable. Has anybody moved this question?
Can you do something about the sound system?
You have a word?
Is this one better? You want me to do it?
Tony from Mariposa.
I hear he's going to be available.
Is this one mic better? Try that. I'm sorry, we were told that all the mics were in operating order, and found that, guess what, they weren't. Okay. So Article 8. Those in favor of Article 8, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Start again. Yes. Any discussion? Any questions?
Lee Thomas, Pennsylott Terrace, Grohl. I'm sorry. I have a question, I don't want to answer the recent problems they had at the high school. That's going to have to cost us money eventually. Should we be worried? I'm concerned about doing money on fields when buildings work. I'm trying to figure out where that's how that's going to work out.
Are you talking about the flood?
Yeah. We're going to have to pay for that eventually, right?
Actually, fully covered by insurance, except for $10,000. Coating overtime to the custodians, the broken insurance, everything. So we're going to do it for $10,000.
Okay, so we're in, it's worth $10,000. One more? I think that's working now.
Dick Hodges, 35 Union Street. The last time we did some athletic renovations at the high school, there was an enormous amount of incompetence. TLT, which is fortunately out of business right now, but we had a brand-new gym floor put in, and no one had the wisdom to put down a three-point line. That had to be done after the fact. They then went out to do the track and made 36-inch lanes. Now, for those of you who aren't familiar with track, you have hurdles which are 42 inches. So take that six inches times six lanes, it was a major, major screw-up. Is there anyone from, now Greg has assured me, and I trust him, but is there anyone from the school committee that can comment on the fact that A, we're going to have competence, we're going to hire competence? TLT, by the way, they were sued in the Cape, they were sued in Georgetown, they were sued in Haville, and guess what? Pennsylott thought it was a fabulous idea to hire that crew. So I, in order for me to vote yes, and I'm willing to vote yes, if someone from the school committee will say, yes, we're going to hire competent people, not necessarily low bid. I hate low bid. Those are two words I despise. And the other thing is, who's going to be the quality control person to make sure that this is going to be done correctly this time?
Thank you. Glad to answer that. Name and address, please.
Don Gilley, 116 Main Street, I'm on the school committee. I'm sorry if you can't hear me. I think they're going to do a great job. This project here was just recently done with some of the same people that are going to be involved with it. I don't have any reason to believe that you won't pay your money for us.
Anything else?
Over the side?
Greg, please.
The school, the school is contracted with Gale Associates. Perhaps some of you have seen the presentation we did, it's on the website, it was disseminated to the towns, showing a video on if it's been done yet or not. Part of the bid process for this project is the, and it'll be challenged most likely, and they will lose this challenge because it's happened in the past, that only companies that employ certified track and tennis court builders will be allowed to bid on the project. There will be a bond in place covering the full value of the project, which will not be released until it is accepted by the MIAA. These are all things that are in the bid documents. The track that's being built is going to be eight lanes and 42 inches, as you rightly pointed out, and we've been asked several times why we're requiring the certified track builder and the certified task court builder, and the quickest definition I can get is, I don't want to be the guy who builds the track wrong again. So that's why those considerations are in there now.
Thank you. And any other questions? Please come to the mic, give your name and address.
Phil Sarsfield, 4 Wood Street. I want to know the need. And I, when I run my budget at my house, I balance my need against what I want, and so I may want a brand-new Mercedes every year, but I don't need a brand-new Mercedes every year. So I wanted, you're asking us to borrow $1.4 million for athletic field, and I want to know what the need is. Why is that something that is necessary at this time?
I'm sorry, what was the question? The need is, the tennis courts probably have one more year in them before we will not be able to use them anymore. We haven't been able to use the track in seven years for the very things that Mr. Hodges outlined. It's not a viable track. We're spending all our money to transfer our students to other places, so we're spending a great deal of money on transportation to move them off-site just to participate in this. Especially track has over 200 participants, and in seven years, these children have never had a home track made. This is one of the bigger problems, bigger problems we have in the schools, helping to retain our students to stay with our school and not go to private schools and places like that. When the survey was done, one of the things that was listed is the facilities at the schools aren't very good. While the towns have stepped up and done work with the elementary schools, and the school committee, and the subcommittee that approved this project, found a way to handle all these things without, again, going for an override, just working within the funds available to the district. So what we're here to do is ask for your authorization to borrow. And it's not just the brand-new task courts and the track, there'll also be a brand-new softball field for the, for the girls. The field hockey field will be rebuilt in the front, and there'll be a new all-purpose field placed in the front where the task courts are running from the thing. It's going to have a drainage system, it's going to have irrigation systems, it's been designed by one of the people that does a lot of the top designing in the state. So we're assuming this is going to be a really good project, it's going to be something that will last a while. We're going to take the transportation savings that we do and stick half of it aside for 10 years, for then we know the track will have to be res serviced, and the task courts will have those more funds available to us, and we'll be repurposing the rest of it into equipment, because we've been buying, able to buy new uniforms and things, or equipment for the kids in a while, too. So the whole thing has been rather well thought out, in my opinion, and I think it's really something that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, we'll move on the, move on the article. Article 8. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Majority. Article 9. To see, excuse me. See if the town will vote to approve the amendment to the purposes of the $800,000 borrowing originally authorized by the vote of the Pennsylott Regional School District School Committee in 2012, so that such appropriation may be used for the purpose of paying costs of projects for the repair of deficient buildings and grounds, including land acquisition, the payment of costs incidental or relative thereto, such as follows: athletic field improvements, land and construction, and development of the athletics plan, upgrade or close high school theater rigging, et cetera, et cetera, and platforms, instrumental storage, and ever, any other socially related items, not to exceed $100,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Pennsylott Regional School Committee recommends, does someone here recommend? Favorable or unfavorable? Favorable. Selectmen? Favorable. Finance? Moved and seconded favorable action. Any other discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article 9, say aye. And opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 10. Okay. This is to amend the regional agreement. I'm sorry, I turned them to pages, I'm sorry. To see if the vote, will vote to approve the amendment. Would someone like to explain this? Would someone like to explain this? Penn Tucket Regional School Committee recommends favorable, I imagine. Yep. Selectmen? Favorable. Finances? Favorable. Discussion?
This is an article, before we changed the regional agreement about two years ago and do that all-encompassing change we did, excuse me, one of the sentences that was changed, we used to be able to only have to vote on articles that affected your town. Apparently, when we made that change, it didn't click that that sentence was removed, so, when Merrimack borrowed some money, it only affects their assessments, it only affects their taxes, all three towns had to approve it. Where in the past, only they had to approve it and we could defeat it, but if we'd had no action, it created the same thing as passing. So, the bond council has asked to follow through. We'll all revote it tonight, even though the project's already done, just for more, just for more, just for more of a process thing. Actually, later on, there's two, there's an article coming on that we'll fix, so we don't have to do this again.
Any other questions? Then we'll vote on this. Those in favor of Article ten say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
Majority. Now, eleven. Amend the regional agreement. To see if the town will vote to amend section thirteen. I'm suspending. We're asking Greg to come and explain it a little bit, please. Just short explanation.
Actually, the next two articles are changes of the regional agreement affecting the approval of debt. Article eleven is a request from the town of West Newbury. What it basically does is allow a town to prepay debt if it chooses not to borrow, which would allow them to save on their interest charges on their assessment. This can only work at the middle-high school level, so it's very rare that it would ever be used, but there was a potential in this one because of the roof project this year. West Newbury is interested in paying upfront their two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars towards the roof project, so this would allow them to do that. It also sets out the methodology that the other two towns would finish off paying the debt. It works in such a way that they would pay no more than of all three towns who went to borrow the same way. It doesn't add or detract anything, it just saves the town that wishes to prepay some interest over ten, fifteen, twenty years, whether the life of the bond is. Again, this is, West Newbury is actually voting tonight to appropriate their money straight up, so if you choose to do this, they'd be allowed then to just pay their money straight up and not have to borrow. Again, no effect on roll with assessment going forward, and this can only be applied to middle-high school projects, as long as I'm standing here. Article twelve basically does the same thing, except it only applies to elementary school projects, where an individual town could vote to borrow and the other two towns don't have to approve it, so we don't have to do the thing we just didn't worry about yet.
Thank you. Okay. Any other? Yeah, sorry, motion. I happen to ask the board of selectmen either recommend? Favorable finances? Okay. We have a motion? Motion and second to move for a vote. Those in favor of Article eleven say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Thank you. So, as Greg explained, Article twelve is basically the same, but it's to do with the elementary schools. Okay. Selectmen, moved and seconded for favorable action. Selectmen recommend? Finances? Okay. Any more discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article twelve say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Thirteen. To transfer for snow and ice removal, to cover the fiscal year two thousand fourteen shortfall which there is every year. Selectmen recommend? Finances? And capital improvement recommends? Favorable. Moved, and I think we have a second for favorable? Okay, we'll vote. Article, those in favor of Article thirteen say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Fourteen. Vote to expend one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars for, to buy a new five, a new five-ten truck for the highway department, submitted by the capital improvement committee. Board of selectmen? Finances? Capital improvement? Moved and seconded favorable action. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article fourteen say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Fifteen. Turnout gear for the call firefighters, hundred thousand dollars. Submitted by capital improvement committee. Selectmen recommend? Finances? Capital improvement? Moved and seconded favorable action. Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor of the turnout, new turnout gear for the call firefighters say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Thank you. Sixteen. For this article, we need a two-thirds majority vote, to transfer three thousand seventy dollars and eighty-nine cents from the overweight surplus account to the stabilization fund account. Article submitted by the finance director. Selectmen recommend? Finances? Moved and seconded favorable action. Any discussion? There being none, we'll vote. Those in favor of Article sixteen say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Seventeen. Transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from Water Enterprise Department to retain earnings for the purpose of reimbursement for variable frequency drives. Articles submitted by the Water and Sewer Commissioners. Selectmen recommend? Finances? Did someone move? Doesn't say. No. There's just a question here for a moment. The article did not say where this money is being transferred to. Maintenance line item. Maintenance line item. We need to vote on the, of, a change in the wording order, that the transfer would be to the maintenance line item. Would someone like, from the department, like to make that amendment? Would you like to say that again?
It's in the expenses line item?
It's in the expenses line item. Oh, not the maintenance line item. To, it's transferred to the expenses line item. Then we, we have just have to vote on the slight change in wording. Those in favor of the new wording say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Okay, now, we vote on Article seventeen as amended. Where those new words in? That it's going to expenses line item. The recommendations of the new, with the new wording from the finance board? Selectmen? Okay. Everybody's in favor, so we'll vote on the amended Article seventeen. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Thank you. Unanimous as amended. So, we know it's not good to pay the somebody to go to Hawaii. Article eighteen, another transfer. Yep.
The sewer expenses line item?
Sewer expenses line item. No better next time, right? We will vote first on the amend, slight amendment to Article eighteen. It's going, this money transfers going to the sewer expenses line item. Those in favor, oh, selectmen recommendation? Favorable. Finances? Okay. Moved and seconded, sorry, I got this backwards today.
As amended.
As amended. Those in favor of Article eighteen as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Article nineteen, to vote to make the following transfers, or take any other action relative thereto. Okay, we're suspending the reading on the article. Now, it's up to you to, to ask if there's anything that you want to discuss on this. Article nineteen. Selectmen recommend? Finances? Moved and seconded favorable action. Now, is there any discussion? Does anybody have any questions about any of those items? There being none, we will vote on Article nineteen. Those in favor of Article nineteen say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Unanimous. That brings us to the end of this special town meeting. I would like to... Motion's been made and seconded to dissolve the special town meeting. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. To the vote, the special town meeting is dissolved. Please stay in your place. I've been told by my husband that I shouldn't have the mic in front of me. Is that any better? Is that worth, is that better? Not too close. Not this close. Okay. And, Groverland, would you like to start?
To Robert J. Kamelowitz, Chief of Police of the Town of Groverland and the County of Essex. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, who are qualified to vote in the annual town meeting, to meet at the Dr. Elmer S. Wagner School, two fifty-three School Street, Groverland, Mass., on Monday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven thirty P.M., to vote on the following articles.
Hi, everyone. Thank you again for coming. Just one thing I wanted to do again before we go too far. Last year, I remember to thank all the people that worked for the town. So, again, I'd like to thank all the members of all the departments that worked for the town, the volunteers that, you know, put in all their time to do the projects that we do to get the town to where it is today. You know, we've got the fire department, police department, water department, sewer department, you know, we've just got so many people that are doing the work for us and we don't ever recognize their service, so, you know, I'd like to thank all them, as well as the committees and the people we appoint, so thank you very much.
Now, and before we start the annual town meeting warrant, I'd like to say, if you folks vote, someone makes a motion that I dispense with the reading of all the warrant articles, this is legal. And that helps things move along. It means that you have to read carefully what you've got in front of you, but if someone would like to make a motion that we dispense, that the moderator dispense with the reading, and we have a vote on that and it passes, then I don't have to read anything. I'll give you time to read if you want. How do you feel about this? No, you carry it? Okay. Those in favor of my dispensing with the reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor, say no.
No.
It's fifty-fifty, so I'll carry on, but I will try and make it short and sweet. Okay. Article one. To see if the town will vote to authorize, selectmen to position the state for chapter ninety firms, basically, under the State Department of Public Works, in accordance with state statutes. Article submitted by the board of selectmen. So, board of selectmen recommend favorable, I imagine. Finance board recommends? Is there a second? Moved and seconded favorable. Any questions? Discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article one say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Two. To see if the town will transfer from our real firms, two hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars for chapter ninety roadwork. Selectmen recommend? Finances? Moved and seconded favorable. Any discussion for the road money? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article two say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Three. Raise an appropriate nine hundred dollars for the William R. Dewhurst Union Post, seven three six six, veterans of foreign wars. Board of selectmen recommend? Finances? Moved and seconded favorable action for the VFW. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Four. To accept the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from the Groverland Municipal Electric Light Department. This is a very tricky one. Board of selectmen recommend? Finances? Moved and seconded favorable to accept thirty-five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Unanimous. Article five. To see, okay, we're going to have some discussion on this. To see if the town will vote to rescind the unused borrowing authority authorized by the affirmative vote of two thousand thirteen annual town meeting warrant, Article twelve. Somebody going to discuss this? Okay. Board of selectmen recommend? Finances? Moved and seconded favorable action. Discussion?
Like to propose an amendment. For article nine, favor your circle. Like to propose an amendment to this article to put a timeframe on when the article would be invoked, when it would begin. Two parts to this amendment. You're gonna have to follow along with me, I'll try to explain it as clearly as I can so that you can see where the words are going to be changed within the article. To see if the town will vote to resent new words as of eleven fifty-nine P.M., June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Continues with the warrant article as written. It's unused borrowing authority authorized by the affirmative vote of two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, warrant article twelve, which authorized the town to borrow three billion six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to acquire approximately sixty-one acres of land, all contingent upon the voters of the town approving the debt exclusion ballot question, which ballot question was approved at the annual election in May of two thousand thirteen. Continuing with the amendment. Provided, however, that if a purchase and sales agreement has been signed by both the town and the seller, and certified and approved by town council, by eleven fifty-nine P.M., June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, that this article shall not take effect or take any other action relative thereto.
This is the amendment. This is the amendment that you want to put in the article.
Correct.
Would you like to explain a little about what the article's about?
As everyone knows, this money was appropriated to purchase sixty-one acres of As everyone knows, this money was appropriated to purchase sixty-one acres of Center Street owned by Jim Bussing. Through the process of trying to get the purchase and sale agreement and to find that he actually owns the land that he's selling to us, we found a few flaws. So, we currently have found that there are two parcels that were in question. We've got it pinned down to those. We just found one at almost six o'clock tonight who the actual owner of the property was. Had to go way back. So, we wanted to, you know, work with the conservation and open space people to give them, you know, one last opportunity. If we can get a purchase and sale agreement in place that shows that the land is actually owned by Jim Bussing, and that it's certified that we aren't going to have any title issues, that we would keep the funding open to make this acquisition of the property. But if we don't have a purchase and sale by midnight on the thirtieth of June, the deal is over. Currently, we're not in a purchase and sale agreement. That expired a little while back. We had given several extensions. We weren't getting any information back, so we had to do the right thing and stop the process. So, currently, it's possible that it could happen, and seeing as the town voted, both here at town meeting and on the ballot to make the purchase, we're giving them that opportunity, but as of that date and time, if it doesn't happen, the money is coming out of the open funding.
Thank you.
Does that amendment need a second? Because I will second it.
If you want to make a comment, you'll have to come to the mic.
I'm seconding the amendment.
Oh, you're seconding the amendment. Please. Yes, there's more discussion. You're next.
Joe DeMore, Cherry Tree Lane. Just a point of clarification, the Board of Selectmen conducted our due diligence and our fiduciary responsibility. When the purchase and sale negotiations broke down because a clear title could not be forthcoming, we felt very compelled that we wanted to take away the vote. That's what the warrant article says. We want to rescind the vote so that that money is not suspended out there for someone else to come by and make a proposal to use it for something else, which is quite possible. However, this seems to be a very reasonable compromise because no one can come by and take that money before July first. So if we set a deadline that clear title and a successful purchase and sale agreement is concluded by, what is it, eleven fifty-nine? June thirtieth, we'll be safe, and it's a good compromise. Thank you.
Daniel McAlmond, Twite Lane, Groveland. This is an opportunity for the town of Groveland to put the genie back in the bottle. Last year, we were before town meeting, and there wasn't a, an executed purchase and sale agreement. Here we are again, it's deja vu. Again, it appears that town's outside a contract. You know, last year, if anyone remembers I was here, I think it's a poor public policy by commercial property in town. Forever and a day, perpetuity, you're going to lose the tax base from that commercial property. Last year, we had a town meeting, and it was disclosed, the dollar amount, three million and change. We went to the general ballot box, and there was no dollar amount on the, on the question. I wasn't pleased with that. I don't know how other people feel, but I think that there was lack of disclosure at the general ballot box. This is an opportunity to right the wrong on this, put the genie back in the bottle. I think that the town vote to rescind this bond. It's an expensive bond, twenty-year debt exclusion. There are bigger fish to fry, there's bigger priorities in town. Got all kinds of high school improvements. If you invest in the quality of schools in town, you invest in your children's future, you invest in your property values, to tie up land, to stop building development, and to preserve open spaces. Well, I'm preserving open spaces too, but, I mean, enough, enough, a third of the town is open space. Has anybody in town been down to the wildlife management area and gone hiking? We don't need any more open space. It'd be nice to have, it'd be nice to have a little acreage field behind the Wagner School that wasn't overgrown with weeds. It'd be nice to have a Washington park that didn't have potholes in it.
Excuse me, we have to wrap it up.
Bottom line, rescind it now, don't allow the modification. It's just stall tactics to push this thing through. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dempsey, can you name another?
Mike Dempsey, Cherry Tree, Altax Road. I just want to remind people, because the previous speaker brought up some good points, but he failed to mention, I think, the biggest reason of all why we voted for this. We voted for it to protect our water supply. That particular property sits on the aquifer that supplies our well for probably eighty percent of the people here. So that's why we voted for it. We didn't vote for it, yes, we're going to get open space, yes, it's great to have some extra room to put some recreation and fields on, and yes, it's expensive. We went through that last year, but the reason why sixty-three percent of the people voted for it, I believe, is because our water supply, we want to protect our water supply. So by purchasing this property, we're going to do that. Unfortunately, we haven't, we haven't been able to close it, but I firmly believe we're putting a gun ahead of this problem. We're going to solve it, and we are going to be able to purchase it by June thirtieth. So I ask you to vote positive on this.
Deborah Young, one oh six Center Street, former member of the zoning board. Stayed on the zoning board for ten years, fighting for this piece of land for the people in this town. I know you say, well, we could put this money to better use, but there's nothing more important than your aquifer. There is nothing more important. It is the most valuable piece of land in this property. And my question to you, when you turn around and you want to take away this money, and you're, you're putting a timeframe on this, what happens to all these people in town that voted to protect this water supply when that money is gone? Does that mean that we lose the right to purchase this land? Does that mean it's open for developers? The developers that wanted to come in and put a hundred and fifty units or three hundred units? You want to talk about what's going on? You're going to have your, your fire department, your electricity, your water supply, everything in this town is not made for this town to grow that quickly. Yes, we need businesses, but we're struggling, and we have to worry about each and every person in this town. And to grow that quickly, we're not a city, we cannot absorb those costs. So I want to know what's going to happen to this piece of property, if it's going to be up for grabs for somebody to come in.
John Osborne, three Pleasant Street, husband of moderator. Last, last time we met, I spoke to this issue, I'd like to remind everyone who's here, maybe there were new people, that the issue is a little more complicated than is being laid out. One of the problems is that we are always frightened of development that will increase the demands on the primary school. Now, what we have done here with the help of Wagner School Building Committee, is increased the capacity of the elementary school from approximately six hundred and fifty people, students, to around nine hundred. However, that is not a very large buffer. And when I was sitting next to the superintendent of schools last time, he was expressed concern that in fact, if indeed they did not buy the property and that it became commercially available, then it might well put a large load of stress on the school system. So there are numerous assets to this issue, namely, the aquifer protection, and also the need to protect the school system from extreme large increases in elementary students. Thank you.
Daniel McAlmond, Twite Lane. I'd just like to reply to what Mr. Dempsey said earlier, and what I, I failed to say about protecting the aquifers. First off, we have a regulatory system in place that's extremely strict. Anybody who's had to deal with conservation in town or some of the other boards, it's very difficult to build whatever you want in town. So, whereas I strongly urge people to take a look at public safety, at clean drinking water, I don't believe in public fear. I think that there are regulatory, regulations in place that will protect people and, and safe lives in place. This is a commercial property over there, and from what I know about it, it was, it was stripped, and, I mean, you, you just can't put anything over there. So if something's going to go there, the, the, the boards will have a right to issue permits, not to issue permits, so to buy something for almost four million dollars on a maybe, you're spending four million dollars on a maybe, okay? I think that's gambling with taxpayers' money. As far as overburdening, burdening the school system, I've heard that too. I don't know if people know that, thank you, Dr. Mulqueen, for stopping the school choice, but we were losing seven thousand dollars per student, about a hundred and seventy-seven students. Student math, it's about a million dollars a year, so we could import students from Havel. If we grow our own students here in Groveland, in Merrimack, in West Newbury, maybe we'll have Grovelanders going to the Wagner Elementary School instead of Havel people, and you won't have to pay seven thousand dollars per student for Havel students. You're paying that out of your taxes. Your taxes have gone up fifty percent over the last seven years. Up two and a half has been up seven percent here in Groveland. This is the home of the overrides, okay? So think hard about it. Don't take the sales pitch that this is, you know, you're going to have dirty water tomorrow. You haven't had dirty water today. I don't think Mr. Dempsey and the Conservation Commission is going to let something go there that shouldn't go there, because I know he'll do the right thing.
Justin Goode, one more time. Mr. Dempsey. Mr. Dempsey said, yes, this is expensive property. Please, let me remind you that last year, we found out that this property is, we're paying six times more what the property is actually worth. So now we have a chance to rethink what we run into last year. And it's, and now we find out the guy may not even own all the property. In addition, it's so valuable, why doesn't the town just take it over by some kind of eminent domain and pay fair market value for it instead of six times what it's worth? I was pressed to rescind, to rescind tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try and make it short and sweet, and I hope I can. More Brad, one seventy-six King Street. Just like to remind folks that this is about a vote to rescind, a vote that was already taken last year and voted upon favorably. It's not a backdoor opportunity to rediscuss it. So it's a simple and clear request tonight that you're voting to give the town additional time to clear up the original issue, not to get into an existential debate about whether or not, whether or not it's right or wrong. We decided last year by a majority that it was right. Let's just get to the point of the matter.
Joe DeMore, Cherry Tree Lane. I wanted to respond to Deborah Young. You had a very compelling question. What happens to the money? It's a very good question. Well, if we rescind the vote, the money is terminated, and that would be in line with the fact that the purchase and sale negotiations are terminated. So if we don't rescind it, we still don't have a purchase and sale, and we actually, Board of Selectmen, the town, we lose control over that money after July first. It will be suspended for others to use for something else.
Sir, my question was, what happens to the land that the people of this town voted to say, and to purchase to save our property for that? Is the question known?
Right. I don't have an answer for that. That's pure speculation. Is it right for development? Possible. I agree with, with that.
That is a good idea.
Exactly. But the funding is out of our control after July first, if it's still out there. So doesn't it make sense for those of us, for those of you that are passionate about buying this piece of land, to reserve those funds by taking them back, and then if there is an opportunity to renegotiate in the future, so be it. We start the process all over again, but at least that money will not be spent for something else. Thank you.
Two quick questions. Is it true that this property, I'm sorry, Dick Hodges, thirty-five Union Street, Groveland, Mass., zero eighteen thirty-four? Is it true that this property presently, right now, does not have a title? A clear title, thank you, clear title?
It is true that currently, there's still one item that shows that the owner doesn't own it.
Okay, and my second question...
The owner that thinks he owns it doesn't.
Okay. My second question really comes from the coffee shop here in town, where the word is, and this may be rumor or maybe absolute gospel truth, an assessment was made on this property for nine hundred thousand dollars in terms of value, and I know we voted last year, I'm not contesting the vote, I had a chance to contest that last year and lost. Three million six hundred and seventy-five, that I, I don't understand.
I also work in the assessor's office. The land assessed value is generally not necessarily today's sale price. We have a delay in what the market's doing. Yes, I think the nine hundred thousand came from what the assessor's office has it assessed for. But I do, and I think I called Mike on the carpet for this during last town meeting, there were three appraisals done on the property with three different prices. So maybe Mike can address those numbers for people, but the assessed value isn't necessarily a valid sale price, because they were looking at the developability of the property, factoring in what Mr. Bussing had proposed. So if his development did indeed go through, obviously, his property is worth more than nine hundred thousand, if he can indeed put a hundred and fifty thousand. And just an aside to this, seeing as I'm up here, whatever we think personally about this, it did go to a ballot. Now, whether or not we all agree with it, we, we have a hundred and seventy-four people here, but a lot more voted, okay? And to leave my personal opinions out of it, we should probably, I don't think allowing the extra time would be harmful. I think it's quite reasonable to give Mr. Bussing that extra opportunity to try to clear his title. But I would like to make a point that maybe someone didn't realize. I sat on the Affordable Housing Committee back in two thousand four, early two thousands, when Mr. Bussing first proposed a forty B out there with Dean Chandraus. We brought to the ZBA's attention that Mr. Bussing did not have clear title. Mr. Bussing told us that. Under the ZBA law, you must own and control the property in order to submit a forty B. I have time and time again brought this up through the ZBA clerk, that they did not have clear title. Why were they even entertaining Mr. Bussing's application for a forty B? The current, the prior ZBA chair basically ignored it. Their paid consultant ignored it. I was incensed. I brought it up on multiple meetings about lack of clear title. Many, many owners have had their hands in that property. It was a quarry, it's owned by many people. Mattingley had the same issue, which she actually cleared hers up. About ten or eleven deeds came through maybe about six or seven years ago. So she understood she had a tiling issue, and she cleared that all up many, many years ago.
Excuse me, you'll have to wrap it up.
So, like I said, I know it got voted on. I'd like to see the extension given, but, you know, see what happens. Give him, give him a chance.
Okay, I think I heard someone moving the question. Do I have a second, or no? Okay. Those in favor moving the question, which means closing off all debate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, that's the end of debate then. We'll now vote on the article as amended. Yes, I'm sorry, we're going to vote on the amendment first. Would someone please read the amendment? Would someone please read the amendment? Please. This is why you're voting on part one. No.
That will be the official reading. See if the town will vote to rescind, to rescind as of eleven fifty-nine PM, June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, its unused borrowing authority authorized by the affirmative vote of two thousand thirteen annual town meeting or in Article twelve, which authorized the town to borrow three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to acquire approximately sixty-one acres of land, all contingent upon the voters of the town approving a debt exclusion ballot question, which ballot question was approved at the annual election in May of two thousand thirteen. A lot of words here. Okay, here's the next key amendment piece of it. Provided however, that if a purchase and sales agreement has been signed by both the town and the seller and certified and approved by town council by eleven fifty-nine PM, June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, that this article shall not take effect or take any other action relative thereto.
Any more questions before we vote on this? We're voting on the amendment first. Okay, the new wording. There being no other questions, we will vote. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
I think the ayes have it. Now we're voting on Article five as amended. Those in favor of Article five with the wording that was just explained to you, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Majority vote. Thank you. Article nine, uh, Article eight is the, sorry. Article six. Article six. This is basically the town budget for running the town. The way, the, just to remind there for everybody, I will just mention where it says the numbers, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine on the first page, I will mention just that title. If anybody wants to discuss anything in that section, please say hold. This is your one chance to hold. And then at the end of the several pages, we will go back and discuss the hold items, the items that have been held. Anybody got, uh, anybody, anyone was confused over that? Nope. Okay. General Government, number one, Moderator. Two, Selectmen. Three, Department of Budget and Finance. Four, Town Accountant. Five, Board of Assessors. Six, Town Council. Seven, Computer System Consultant. Eight, Town Clerk. Nine, Conservation Commission. Ten, Planning and Engineering. Eleven, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. Twelve, zoning Board of Appeals. Thirteen, Municipal Fields and Water. Fourteen. Hold. Please make it very clear if you're holding. Shout it out. Did we have, put your hand up if you how, uh, wanted to hold on thirteen. Thirteen is a hold. Is there a hold on fourteen? No. Okay, so thirteen's the only hold so far. Fourteen Municipal Buildings. Fifteen Insurance. Sixteen Town Reports. That's General Government. Now we're going to Public Safety. Police Department.
Hold.
Hold. Parking Clerk. Communications. Fire Department. Hold. Inspectors. Civil Defense. Animal Control Officer. That's total public safety. Next, we're on to Education, twenty-four. That's all of Education. Next, twenty-five Public Works. Twenty-six Highways. Twenty-seven Street Lighting. Twenty-eight Rubbish Collection. Twenty-nine Cemetery. That's total of Public Works. Next, we're onto Human Services. Board of Health. Counselor and Aging. Elder Services of the Merrimack Valley. Veterans. That is the total of Human Services. Next, Culture and Recreation. Library. Did anyone say hold for that? No? Okay, no library. Memorial Day expenses, services. That's the end of Culture and Recreation. Next, Debt Services. Debt Interest and Debt Principalism. Nothing under that. Unclassified. Essex County Retirement Fund. Unemployment Compensation. Employees Health Insurance. Employees Life Insurance. Medicare Tax. That's the total of Unclassified. And that is the end of Article six. Now we know, we go back to the beginning. The first hold is on Municipal Fields and Water. Someone wishes to talk about? Please give your name and address. You'll have to, I think you'll have to pull it down.
Carrie Merrill, fourteen Summer Street, Grove Land. I'm wondering what fields are included?
Who has the answer to that? What fields are included? Okay? You can try again.
Greg, you never hit no.
Uh, the municipal Fields and Water budget handles the irrigation systems and well maintenance and the fertilization of the town hall complex in Elm Park. It also provides for the painting of the gazebo at Elm Park. It provides for the maintenance contract of the clock at Elm Park and basically if any irrigation parts break or things like that, it's done. A few years ago, I know what Paulier was talking about, it was taken out of the system. It used to be a bigger number, about thirty-five thousand. And during the budget cuts of the early two thousands, we reduced the Shanahan Field and Washington Park. It allowed the soccer and baseball people to maintain that under their own systems. So actually that's what it's paying for right now.
Any other questions on that Municipal Fields and Water? That being that we'll move on to the next hold, which is Public Safety, Police Department. We had a question.
Justin Goodwin, one more time. Um, I really like the job the policemen do in this, in this town. I really do. But why is the sergeant's salary more than doubling?
More dormits.
Um, last year, the chief in his budget moved some things around. He removed the secretary's salary, as you can see on here. And he ended up making one of the patrolmen a sergeant at a lower rate. There's a senior sergeant and then a patrol sergeant. So he added the sergeant, which was a position. They used to have four supervisory positions prior to his term. So he was getting that one person back.
Mr., name and address, please?
Uh, Chuck Arslak, ninety-four Main Street. Um, I guess I just have a question about the secretary's salary that was there for this year. Twenty-six thousand, four seventy. And just from our previous special meeting, there was an amount that was appropriated for sixty-four seventy that got moved over. Is there an error in numbers there? Was there? The secretary was removed completely now from the line, but.
If you looked at the line actually, that was appropriated from, what?
That was previous?
Zero, zero for this year. Five is what.
Okay. That's why there was an error. And but, but from the previous meeting though, when it moved to the patrolman's salary, that sixty-four seventy was for two thousand fourteen on the secretary's salary line. We had that Article nineteen where the police secretary line item was moved to a patrolman's salary line item. It was removed completely. Okay. All right. I don't completely understand.
Next.
Nancy Webster, sixty-nine King Street. I was just curious what the incentive wages and other wages, what's, uh, what are those?
Would like to answer that? Um?
Good evening. To answer the question, the incentive. Robert Romelowitz, Police Chief. The incentive wages is education incentive wages. Used to be called the Quinbill years ago and its officers get paid for their college degrees. Uh, it's common throughout the state. The other wages, that's all of reserve offices pay, overtime, court time, holiday pay, vacation pay for officers to fill in. Any other questions?
Any more questions for the police chief?
There's still no clarity on doubling the number seventy-three thousand to a hundred and fifty-one. The respect was degrading. It was not clear.
Yes, what we did is we took, one of the patrolmen was promoted to sergeant. One of the patrolmen was promoted to sergeant. So the salary for a patrolman came out of the sal, the patrolman's salary line item and it was moved into the sergeant's line item. That's why you'll see a decrease from the patrolman's line item from FY thirteen and an increase in the sergeant's line item for FY fourteen.
Okay. Thank you.
And, yes, what we did too is we took the secretary's salary and some of it went into the compensation for the sergeant's salary and the remainder went into all other. And we have more offices on the street. We have, I explained this at a special meeting before. Years ago, we had a safety car, uh, we saved the car to keep traffic. Now we have reserve offices in that on a four-on-two rotation. That reserve pays, so it's a great bargain for the town.
Okay. Any more questions for the chief? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to the next and final hold. I think that's the final one. The Fire Department. Who was, who put the hold on now?
Uh, Robert Lay, one Georgia Street. I will check work on the mic. So I'm between you and the end of this article. Um, I will be brief. For those of you that have been following along at home on cable TV or on social media, uh, there's not a lot of surprise here. I was appointed Fire Chief in October. Uh, since that day, I've been very straightforward with the Board of Selectmen in negotiating my current contract, which could only be paid up to what was appropriate at last year's meeting. So regardless of the size of the job, there were limited funds. Over the last six months, I have done a lot of work to look into realigning the budget as it sits today. So what you have in front of you here are the changes that I'm proposing is taking the chief's position and increasing it to thirty hours a week. There is no way you could do this job in fourteen hours a week. I don't care who we are, I wouldn't believe, can't be done. Because on the last two pages of what's written here is the job description. For those of you that have a job description at work, if you read this one, you'd say, anyway, I have a lot of stuff to do. You could argue the size of the town, but then you would, you would have to recognize that the salary comps in the other communities, it's in here. See what the other chiefs earn. Not looking for eighty, ninety, hundred thousand dollars. I sized this thing relative to the Georgetown model, which is, is in the low sixties for forty hours. Three quarters of that comes out to the number that you seen here to that. This is about public safety. This is about being on the job as often as I can. I'm in town the majority of the time. Anyhow, there's just more work to be done here than what many of you may recognize. Doesn't affect your tax rate one bit. This is, this is all funded within the existing budget. And I'm sure there'll be some opposition to this, so, uh, why don't we, why don't we get right out of here?
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Demore is in front of you. You're letting him go? Right. Uh, and just before, and everybody keeps a three minutes, please?
We can dispute this all night, but I just want to let everybody know that unless the Board of Selectmen, who is in charge of this budget, changes the line items, you know, this, we could vote a million dollars tonight, but it isn't gonna make any difference because if the selectmen's plan is what it is on your paper and they stay with that, it's not gonna change. So, I mean, we can do this all night.
Thank you.
Daniel McDonald again, two way.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, I won't need two minutes. I don't see it as a taxpayer issue, uh, whether or not there's, uh, you know, a dollar available or a million dollars available. Fact of the matter is, uh, remains that there was a job posted. There were several qualified candidates that were interviewed. Uh, and if it was a full-time position or one with certainly double the hours and additional benefits, uh, there may have been more qualified applicants that would have posted for that position. So, um, if the job is to change, I urge the Board of Selectmen to repost the position, um, solicit qualified people. And you know what? It may very well be a job that requires more hours, but this is a small town and it's had a volunteer fire department for a number of years and they've done an outstanding job. And there may be some retired firemen out there that may need a part-time job and he's happy with no benefits and a little amount of pay and he wants to do something called community service and not self-service. So I think there's a strong appearance. And again, you know, it seems to me, and I could be wrong, but it seems like somewhat of a get your foot in the door and bait and switch. So I'm not happy about what I've heard and I think we ought to, uh, keep the budget the way it is, keep the volunteer fire department, keep that payroll down. And if, and if there is a need for public safety, repost it. Thank you.
Joe Demore, nine Cherry Tree Lane. Point of clarification, the fire chief, within two weeks of accepting the position, immediately began to communicate to us in open sessions that the fourteen hours was insufficient to complete the job. Uh, so it did not take six months to come to that realization. Couldn't take a study. I think it was a, uh, an intention and I do question whether or not the fire chief negotiated or tried to negotiate, or, excuse me, accepted the position in good faith. Uh, keep in mind that there are three ways that we can run a fire department in this town. Three separate laws. Chapter, all fall in the chapter forty-eight. Forty-two A is what's called weak chief. Kind of a silly semantics, but a weak chief is essentially a managerial chief that is controlled by the Board of Selectmen. He can be fired either at will or with cause. Last year, we got rid of the Board of Fire Engineers, which never was in place for twenty years properly within the law. They operate under chapter forty-eight, section forty-five, sprinkled with a few others all the way up to fifty-five. But they never appointed a fire chief. And so they actually never.
They bring in, we'll vote on the VZ Park Revolving Fund. Those in favor of Article fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no? In unanimous. Fifteen.
Can we dispense a reading? I have one adjustment on this. I think they were sampling the marijuana in the wrote the article.
On the second section of it, sixteen oh three point one, about halfway through, it says June thirtieth of two thousand fourteen. That needs to be two thousand fifteen, and I believe it's not going to really much matter because as of November, they're probably going to change the laws, and it won't matter what we voted tonight, but we need to vote it anyway.
You could amend it to what Selectmen Green says is correct. There is, I've got here somewhere an opinion from the Attorney General on another town that asked for an enlargement of that moratorium through to June twenty fifteen, and they said no. They won't grant this vote tonight if you vote to ask for an enlargement of the moratorium through to June twenty fifteen. What the AG's office says is, we might grant it up through November of two thousand fourteen. So your best chance of getting any kind of moratorium would be if you amended this to, say, November of two thousand fourteen. That's the most you would get in any event. No guarantee you'll get that at all, but that's your best shot.
But due to the fact we had the planning board do a public hearing, and they mentioned the change to two thousand fifteen for June thirtieth, we'd prefer to vote it as amended to that date, and it won't matter what we do if the AG changes it.
Let's try it a little bit. I have five articles. Jim Freer, Planning Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You're deaf. Usually not. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Basically, I have five articles already written. We just have to look those over within the planning board ourselves, and then we have to hold a public hearing, and we'll probably hold at least one, maybe two. We're not sure yet. And at that point, we could probably get this done by November thirtieth. I planned on having this thing done by twelve thirty-one anyway, so that it'd be submitted to the town. Problem that we will have is that you're going to have to have a special town meeting to have this voted at that point. That has to be, and that's going to be a two-thirds vote. It's not just fifty percent plus one. So all we have to do is tonight amend this thing to November thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, pass the article, and I'll have something for you.
Madam Moderator, Mr. Freer, that would be November twenty fourteen, this coming November.
All right.
You can make it any way you want. I'm just telling you what the AGs can say.
Mr. Freer, what date do you want?
November thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
November... Then that date on the end of this article, sixteen oh three point one, in the middle of it, shall be in effect through, instead of, take out June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, and change it to November thirty, two thousand fourteen. Now we're going to vote on the amendment first.
Vote the amendment. Second.
Second. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed saying no?
No.
Majority, got it. And now we're voting on the article as amended with that new date, November thirtieth. The planning board has to give a report.
We recommend favorable action while we are planning.
As amended. The planning board is recommending favorable action with that new date, November thirty, two thousand fourteen. And we're going to vote on the article as amended, okay? Oh, I thought we'd done that. Yeah, we've done that. Okay. It's been moved and seconded favorable on the amended article. We will get there eventually, hang in there, folks. We're now going to vote on the whole article with a new date in it, as amended. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
Majority have it. That was a majority. That's over the two-thirds. Okay. It's a two-thirds vote. I think we had three people voting aye. We had to have a two-thirds vote. Okay. Onward and upward. Eighteen, the Pines, sorry, I'm turning over two pages again. Sorry. Yep. Dispense of the reading of the article. All right? It's about the Pines Recreation Program. Finance?
Favorable.
Recommend favorable. Selectmen recommend?
Favorable.
Finance?
Favorable.
Moved in second and favorable. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
Majority have it. That was a majority. That's over the two-thirds. Okay. It's a two-thirds vote. I think we had three people voting aye. We had to have a two-thirds vote. Okay. Onward and upward. Eighteen, the Pines Re...
Eighteen.
Sorry, I'm turning over two pages again. Sorry. Yep. Dispense of the reading of the article. All right? It's about the Pines Recreation Program. Finance?
Favorable.
Recommend favorable. Selectmen recommend?
Favorable.
Finance?
Favorable.
Moved in second and favorable. Any discussion?
Vote.
Article eleven. Those in favor of Article eleven for the cylinder air bottles, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
The ayes have it. Article eleven, thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars for purchasing replacements of carbon cylinder air bottles. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable.
Finance?
Favorable. Move favorable action.
Moved in second and favorable. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
Majority have it. And now we're voting on the article as amended with that new date, November thirty, two thousand fourteen. And we're going to vote on the article as amended, okay? Oh, I thought we'd done that. Yeah, we've done that. Okay. It's been moved and seconded favorable on the amended article. We will get there eventually, hang in there, folks. We're now going to vote on the whole article with a new date in it, as amended. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
Majority have it. That was a majority. That's over the two-thirds. Okay. It's a two-thirds vote. I think we had three people voting aye. We had to have a two-thirds vote. Okay. Onward and upward. Eighteen, the Pines Re...
Eighteen.
Sorry, I'm turning over two pages again. Sorry. Yep. Dispense of the reading of the article. All right? It's about the Pines Recreation Program. Finance?
Favorable.
Recommend favorable.
Selectmen recommend? Favorable.
Finance board recommends?
Favorable. Move favorable.
Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
Majority have it. That was a majority. That's over the two-thirds. Okay. It's a two-thirds vote. I think we had three people voting aye. We had to have a two-thirds vote. Okay. Onward and upward. Eighteen, the Pines Re...
Eighteen.
Sorry, I'm turning over two pages again. Sorry. Yep. Dispense of the reading of the article. All right? It's about the Pines Recreation Program. Finance?
Favorable.
Recommend favorable.
Selectmen recommend? Favorable.
Finance board recommends?
Favorable. Move favorable.
Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
Majority have it. That was a majority. That's over the two-thirds. Okay. It's a two-thirds vote. I think we had three people voting aye. We had to have a two-thirds vote. Okay. Onward and upward. Eighteen, the Pines Re...
Eighteen.
Sorry, I'm turning over two pages again. Sorry. Yep. Dispense of the reading of the article. All right? It's about the Pines Recreation Program. Finance?
Favorable.
Recommend favorable.
Selectmen recommend? Favorable.
Finance board recommends?
Favorable. Move favorable.
Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
The ayes have it. Article eleven, thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars for purchasing one police line vehicle.
What is it?
What is it about?
The D P. We have some culverts. One at Salem Street that goes under the road, right down near the sharp corner. They won't allow us to do any repairs or bring in any engineering proposals unless we do a water flow test. So basically, they're looking for us to do a study from Johnson's Pond at the Barksford Able Line down through until it gets to the river, and this will suffice what they're looking for. So we need to spend twenty thousand dollars so we can repair things that are going to cave in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then we'll take a vote. Those in favor of Article thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
In unanimous. Fourteen, vote to reauthorize the VZ Memorial Park Revolving Fund. I was established at a special town meeting in nineteen ninety-six. Conservation Commission should give a report. Board of Selectmen recommend?
Favorable.
Finance?
Favorable.
Moved in second and favorable. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no?
No.
Majority have it. That was a majority. That's over the two-thirds. Okay. It's a two-thirds vote. I think we had three people voting aye. We had to have a two-thirds vote. Okay. Onward and upward. Eighteen, the Pines Re...
Eighteen.
Sorry, I'm turning over two pages again. Sorry. Yep. Dispense of the reading of the article. All right? It's about the Pines Recreation Program. Finance?
Favorable.
Recommend favorable.
Selectmen recommend? Favorable.
Finance?
Favorable.
Any more discussion? Then we'll vote.
The city's office says is we might grant it up through November of 2014. So your best chance of getting any kind of monitoring would be if you amended this to say November of 2014. That's the most you would get in any event. No guarantee you'll get that at all, but that's your best shot.
But due to the fact we had the planning board do a public hearing and they mentioned the change to 2015 for June 30th. We'd prefer to vote it as amended to that date. And it won't matter what we do if the AG changes it.
It's the same one?
Well, it really is two of us. Right. Let's try it. It won't be out of. I have five articles already written. But maybe five. Jim Freer, Planning Board.
Mr. Freer, can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Here you go. Usually not. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, basically, I have five articles already written. Uh, we just have to look those over within the planning board ourselves. And then we have to hold a public hearing. And we'll probably hold at least one, maybe two. We're not sure yet. And at that point, we could probably get this done by November 30th. I planned on having this thing done by 12:31 anyway. So that it'd be submitted to the town. Problem that we will have is that you're gonna have to have a special town meeting to have this voted at that point. That's, that has to be, and that's gonna be a two-thirds vote. It's not just fifty percent plus one. So all we have to do is tonight amend this thing to November 30th, 2015. Pass the article and I'll have something for you.
Madam Moderator, Mr. Freer, that would be November 2014, this coming November.
All right.
You can make it any way you want. I'm just telling you what the AGs can say.
Mr. Freer, what date do you want? November. Then that date on the end of this article, sixteen oh three point one, in the middle of it shall be in effect through instead of take out June 30th, 2014, and change it to November 30, 2014. Now, we're going to vote on the amendment first.
Vote for the amendment. Second.
Second. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed now?
No.
Majority, got it. And now we're voting on the article as amended with that new date, November 30th. The planning board has to give a report. As amended. The planning board has recommended favorable action with that new date, November 30, 2014. And we're going to vote on the article as amended, okay? Oh, I thought we'd done that. We've done that? Yeah, we've done that. Okay. It's been moved and seconded favorable on amended article. We will get there eventually, hang in there, folks. We're now going to vote on the whole article with the new date in it, as amended. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Majority have it. That was a majority. That's over, over the two, over the two-thirds. Okay, it's a two-thirds vote. I think we had three people voting may. We got, we had to have a two-thirds vote. Okay. Onward and upward. Eighteen. Uh, the Pines Re- Sorry, I'm turning over two pages again. Sorry. Yep. Dispense of reading of the article. All right? It's about the Pines Recreation Program. Uh, finance? Recommend favorable selection? Moved through the second? Moved in second favorable. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. Uh, those in favor of Article sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Seventeen. Zoning, realtor zoning board of appeals revolving fund. Waverwinding? Selectmen recommend? Finance board recommends? Moved and seconded favorable. We'll have a zoning board of appeals report.
Hi, my name's Tom Wakefield, Chairman of the Zoning Board Appeals. In the last year, the board, applications as of April fifteenth, 2014, we had five special permits for him of finance. We had seven special permits for businesses. And we had one project which is ongoing, the RDB, Charlie Fields, Bobly, White, uh, yeah, White Bridge, I had one, White Bridge Village for Hundred Houses, and that status of that is still pending. That's, that's the project we talked about earlier. And it's up, it's coming forward aboard in June. And the year-to-date balance is on our accounts is the revolving account is fourteen hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. And the revenue account has a balance of four hundred, which is, we get five thousand a year. And as of today, we still have four hundred in that account.
Thank you, thank you. Any more discussion? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Eighteen. Realtorize the Bagman School Summer Program Revolving Fund. The Director of the Program should give a report. Selectmen recommend? Finance? Is there a second to move favorable? Moved in seconded favorable. Is there anyone to give a reporting? No? Then we'll vote. Those in favor of Article eighteen? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Majority. Nineteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve a community preservation fund fiscal year of fifteen revenues as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. And you've got in front of you the recommendations, the amounts, and the explanation. Board of Selectmen recommend? Finance?
Favorable.
Moved in seconded favorable. Anyone who'd like to discuss this or ask questions? They're bringing in, we'll vote. Article nineteen, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to appropriate one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve. And for the purpose of the development of the plan for the Groveland Community Trail, et cetera, et cetera. Do we need to revision? Okay. Board of Selectmen recommend? Finance? Okay, before we have discussion? Moved favor. Okay, now we'll have discussion.
We do have one small amendment. Around in the middle, right after it says Groveland Community Trail to be managed by, we want to change that to the Town of Groveland Finance Director and the Open Space and Trails Committee. So that'll be to be managed by the Town of Groveland Finance Director and the Groveland Open Space and Trails Committee on the CPA category of open space.
Okay, have you written that down and given that to Adam? You've got it? Okay. Then we, do you wish to discuss the amendment? Okay, we have to vote on the amendment first, don't we, Phil? Okay, we have to discuss and vote on amendment first, if you don't mind. Is there anyone who wants to discuss the amended, you know, the new wording for this? Anybody who wants to discuss that? Ask questions? Okay, then we'll just vote first on, we'll get to you for the part two, all right? Then, first of all, we're going to vote on the new wording that the managing group is going to be the Town of Groveland Finance Director and Groveland Open Space Committee and Trails Committee.
Would it be? I understand.
Okay, so we're, first of all, we're going to vote on those changes. To be managed by, you're taking out Mike Davis of the Groveland Open Space and putting in Town of Groveland Finance Director and Groveland Open Space and Trails. Okay? That's the part we're going to vote on first. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimous for the amendment. Unanimous for the amendment. Now we're on to the whole Article twenty as amended. Now, discussion.
Alex Johnson, four sixty-one Main Street, Chairman of the Open Space and Trails Committee. And I, I had already condensed, and I realize I'm the last article, so I'm gonna try to keep it even briefer, but it was a forty-five minute presentation that had already been shrunk to three pages. And I, there's a lot going on here, but I want to try to make it as concise as possible. So we'll try, and if there's questions, we'll address them. But basically, as you can imagine, a lot of us, or a lot of people have been focused on alternative transportation, obviously a lot of concerns about fuel use and everything else. And so there's a lot of focus on alternatives. Recently, the governor actually signed his new budget that had several hundred million dollars in it specifically for alternatives. There's a big commitment to alternative transportation, you know, like pedestrian traffic in particular. For those who are familiar with it, there's a border-Boston Trail which has been in, in the works for a number of years. It runs from PBD up to Salisbury, uses a lot of railroad corridors or abandoned railroad corridors and right away, or utility rightaways. The trail will be about thirty miles when it's done. They've got about ten miles built so far. The rest is all in progress. It's a great project. It runs right through Groveland, Georgetown, right next to us. The, the Mayor of Groveland Planning Commission commissioned a study back in 2012, feasibility study to basically identify the viability of this project. And on the heels of that, got together members from Georgetown, Groveland, and April to start talking about this Georgetown branch trail, which essentially would start in the center of Georgetown where the border-Boston Trail comes out and runs up into downtown Bradford, right to Bradford Train Station. So it connects nicely between sort of, you know, logical centers for the trail and the three town centers. We've been doing this for two years, and there's been a lot of discussion on how to move this forward. And we've certainly gotten to the point where we were trying to figure out what makes sense for the Town of Groveland. Because it's nice to think that eventually this will link into the border-Boston Trail, it'll go through Georgetown, and it'll go into downtown Bradford. But how do we make, how do we make sense of this project in the context of Groveland so that Groveland can benefit from it in the absence, you know, or until those towns decide to finish their part of the project? And I will tell you, based on the other projects they're engaged in, both April and Georgetown ultimately do want to do that linkage and do want to commit to that development. But for the time being, what we had said was, at least what the Open Space and Trails Committee and folks that we had talked with was, you know, what makes sense for the time being is to use, do it as a Groveland Community Trail. The idea that it would link, it would leverage this right of way that exists in our town, a bend corridor, railroad corridor, but would extend it to include some major town resources, some key points of interest. So that this trail really is intended to be a trail that links our community together. If you look at the map, a lot of you have the map, it's on there, we've done it. We tried to identify, yeah, on the back of that sheet you got earlier, it's gonna be a map. We've tried to identify a lot of the key points of interest in town that it links, you have a lot of key, a lot of heavy residential areas, it links two schools, it links town center, it links town hall, a couple of different parks, recreation areas. So, so the trail's proposed, basically runs up the corridor from, from King Street, over Georgetown, all the way to Estes Lumbering and Park Defense. Takes you right along Main Street, follows Main Street along the water, all the way to town hall. Keep in mind, this is still a conceptual plan at this point. It's, it's proposed this way because it seemed to make a lot of sense to us. But really, the next part of the process, what we're trying to get engaged in for this CPA proposal, would be the design elements and all the public outreach that would really contribute to confirming whether this is the right path it needs to take, whether it needs to be longer, shorter, different route.
We'll have to cut it short, Mr. Freer.
Ryan? Okay. Just a couple of points, I'll try to be as brief as possible. We believe, well, sorry about time delay. It's a long-term project, okay? These projects take eight, ten, twelve years. And so the reason it started is because there's a long lead timeline. And most of that's because ultimately, the funding, we'll talk about the funding, is paid for by the state. So most of the development of this, most of the cost to actually build this trail is not on our shoulders. The way it typically works is the town has to put forth the engineering costs. And so we estimate as of right now, based on the information we have, we estimate those engineering costs run probably around five hundred, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the length of the project, so over the next ten to twelve years. Keeping in mind that those engineering costs will all come out of our CPA funds, existing CPA funds and funds that are replenished on an annual basis. Those CPA funds are already matched, right? So for every dollar we put into the CPA fund, there's somewhere between sixty and a hundred percent of that that the state contributes. So the five hundred, let's say the five hundred grand we need to contribute into this project, or the length of the project, was really only about three hundred grand in tax money upfront. At the tail end of the design, or when you've gotten substantially through the design, the state comes in through the TIP program. And the TIP program has both a regular road development piece, but also has an alternatives piece. The state comes in through the TIP program and funds the entire development of the trails, the entire construction. Funds it at about the ten to one ratio to your contribution, right? So if we put in five hundred grand, that funds about a five million dollar project from the state, okay? What that really means is that out of our tax dollars, if we paid about three hundred grand in tax dollars upfront, right, we're stretching that to a five and a half million dollar project. And the only outlet from the town was that three hundred grand in tax money we put aside for CPA in purple. So in thinking about efficient projects, this is a way to take our three hundred thousand dollar tax investment that we put into CPA in the first place and turn it into a five and a half million dollar asset now, right? So we're trying to be as efficient as possible, and I think this is frankly better than any grant I've ever seen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you elaborate on that?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll defer to somebody else, and if someone has questions, we can answer that.
Okay.
Hi, Les Harron, one ninety-seven King Street. I'm a Butters. And the Butters have many concerns, and I don't think it's because we're missing a flaw. Security, trash, there's a lot of different concerns. What I don't understand is this committee hasn't met with the road commissioner, hasn't met with the chief of police, hasn't met with any of the Butters. And I think they're important, very important on this project. And as far as the state money, I know when we did ninety-seven, although we were competition with Georgetown on their rail trail money, and we won it. So that state money is kind of, I don't completely understand it, but I know that happened to us. And we won it, and we did ninety-seven. And it is gonna cost taxpayers over a half a million dollars. Not only that, if we tie into April, it goes a little further, and then there's a bridge. And there's a bridge that the power company wants trucks to go on. So what is that gonna cost? So at full expense, I don't see a deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Chuck Arrowslack. I'm at ninety-four Main Street. Worked in Essex County for a few years. I work in the outdoor industry. The outdoor recreation economy is a seven hundred billion dollar economy. It brings in tons of dollars. It connects communities, it brings communities together. And it's a good thing for our children. I have a third grader, a fourth grader here in Bag now. My son is learning so much from Miss Seager's classes. And we have some great sports recreation type of activities here and places, but they don't really go anywhere. If you're not involved in a team sport, you're not gonna take part in it. There's a lot of research being done on these type of interactive trails, and it's a rail trail. It's trying to maintain a railway system and a transportation system that was already developed there. So you use these existing spaces to create a new form of transportation. And who's to say what's gonna happen years down the line as far as the infrastructure of our systems and roads falling apart and people choosing different ways to go from that to it? I really have to commend Mike and Alex for pulling things together with regards to being transparent about this. They've had meetings. They've been fully attended. There haven't been a lot of people there, but they've explained what this money is gonna be used for initially. It's like any type of good research project would, you set out some money and you figure it out about it. And that's what this hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna do for us. It's gonna say, what does this mean? What's it gonna mean for the Butters? And have some fact-based type of discussion that's gonna go on so we can get some better decisions and get some input from the Butters with some kind of factual type of information. Not with just some rhetoric and some conjecture, but actually factual information. Just a few things, just, you know, there's a lot of sites out there you could look about the rail trail. I picked up this book here at the library, Seven Hundred Great Rail Trails, the National Directory. Be great to see Groveland. I mean, it greatly is connected with other communities and not just off the map. Economics. A nineteen ninety-three survey of thirty business along the Cape Cod Rail Trail in Massachusetts found that twenty-four percent of the business centers cited the rail trail as one reason they had opened or acquired their business, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Management. The same survey found that sixty percent of the businesses expanded their business, and of those, one has considered the rail trail a prominent factor in its decision. Other facts. In nineteen ninety-nine, two million bicycle tourists spent an estimated of thirty-six point three million dollars quality of life, intoxicating quality of life. Trails are the number one amenity potential homeowners cite when asked what they would like to see in the new community ahead of park parks and outdoor pools, according to the National Association of Homeowners. Property values. Groveland's property values and assessed values, if you look at the past five years, have decreased ten percent. In the last year alone, it's six percent. Our taxes have increased during that period of time thirty percent.
Excuse me, you're running out of time.
Last, like you say, just from a property value standpoint, trails are doing ways to increase the natural beauty of communities and it's showing the bulk of the balls for property values. And just my last closing statement here, again, this is just, a lot of this documentation you can find. Trails in green spaces are important community amenities that help to support our economic development. For homeowners choosing to live along a park-like trail, the bicycle tourists making their way from small town to small town. Trails are important community facilities that attract people and families.
Thank you. Sit down. Sit down. Continue.
Gotta use your teaching voice, Elaine.
Hello?
I'm Lynn Muse, Love and Cannondale Avenue, also a teacher here at the Bagman School, fourth grade. I'm gonna come out a little bit differently. I'd just like to show kids, if you don't mind, how many of you have ever walked around Eden Park on the trail today? Were brought with children or grandchildren to the Haunted Heights with the fourth grade teachers and students do, and families? How many of you have ever walked along the Pines Trail? The New Pines Trail? So, fourth grade is there too, working on those and how many of you have gone to the town forests? Everybody? So there's a kiosk there that was built by one of our, that general camp here and other resident with students. Maybe some of your children, any of your children helped build those trails? Kiosks, picnic tables, the Easy Park, fourth grade, open space program. That's why I'm wearing this bright yellow, it doesn't go with my skirt outfit. But what I, we have met with the rail trail people, and the fourth grade teachers are very committed to this. We are the people that work with your children or communities' children to expose them to open spaces and trails, make them value nature and be outside. So we're doing a lot of things. We do measurement and math and enrichment activities through these open space activities. So I do have a little one page prepared speech. For the past five years, grade four students, teachers, and parents have participated in open spaces and trail projects in Groveland. Over the years, we have created and maintained trails at Hiller Pond, Town Forest, Easy Park, and our new location, the Pines. Students with the help of parents and teachers have built walking bridges, picnic tables, a kiosk, inserted signposts, made trail maps. Our learning community has also sponsored a one walk at Hiller Pond and Haunted Heights and Haunted Walks at Easy Park. Grade four has also secured grants from the New England Biolabs and the Department of Conservation and Recreation. The grade four teachers met to review the plans for the rail trail being considered in tonight's town meeting vote in terms of investigation. We unanimously support this project and look forward to being a part of its creation and maintenance. Respectfully submitted by the grade four teachers of the Bagman School.
We have several people who said move the question. Now you have to vote, folks, on whether you want to, there are several more people who want to speak, but it's up to, once someone says move the question, it's up to me to ask you whether you want to stop discussion. Those in favor of stopping discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor of stopping discussion, say no.
No.
I think the ayes have it to stop discussion. Sorry, folks. Very sorry. So, we're now on Article twenty. Board of Selectmen recommends favorable and Finance Board recommends favorable action. Moved and seconded favorable. Okay, we're now going to vote on Article twenty. One hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund for the purpose of the development of the plan for the Groveland Community Trail. Vote as amended to be under the management of Groveland Finance Director and the Open Space Committee. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no.
No.
The majority wins. But there's a motion to dissolve. Can you just hold on one second, folks? I just have one announcement to make. On Wednesday, on Wednesday evening at the town hall, the League of Groveland Butters is having Candidates Night. All the candidates who are on the ballot for next Monday's election will go to town hall member night at seven. I hope to see you there. Those in favor of dissolving, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who wants to stay the night, say no. Okay, thank you.
I will, I will.